All right, we'll call this meeting to order at four forty-two on January the twenty-second. And we'll turn it over to Dr. Smith.
As I took a bite. Thank you all for being here tonight. Special called meeting, and we've got a lot of stuff to talk about tonight, but the most exciting thing is to start talking about what we want to be for the future of Arlington tonight ISD and the students that we serve. And I need you to know that Jody Duran was the first administrator I ever met in the state of Texas.
Oh, wow.
And she has been good to me since then, and so I'm super excited to get to work with Jody. And both Jody and Buck have been very well-respected superintendents in our state. And so now they're working with Mo Casey. As you all know, and I explained to you before, Mo Casey is our vendor that we selected for strategic planning services. We think, one, they do an outstanding job, and two, it's a very thoughtful and very deliberate approach to ensuring that we are monitoring progress and reporting out on that through a scorecard. And I think that speaks to the work that we've done already since I've been here and setting priorities, talking about key progress measures, and ensuring we're talking about that publicly and how we're monitoring progress moving forward. So I'll turn it over to these two and they get us going.
All right. Well, we are extremely honored to be able to do this work with you all. Just a little bit about our process. We feel very, it's very important to us that we include a lot of voices in this process. We always start with the board and we end with the board, and then we have some intermittent work with the board along the way. But we will be working with your community. We want your community to be involved in this process. We want your senior leader team to be involved in this process. And then I think what's really important about what we do is that it's customized to meet your needs. So there are things that we're going to talk about tonight. We've been looking at some of the things that you all have already done. And so for tonight, we just really want to check some boxes on what are your expectations with the work that has been done? How much of that do we want to continue forward? Or do we want to like start from ground zero from scratch? So we just want some clarity from you all. But again, we're just so happy to be here. I am Jody Duran, twenty, thirty-one years in public education, retired in twenty-twenty-two. Truly an honor to be able to work with and for Buck. He is my boss, but I love.
Can't believe that.
Love working, we do a lot of work across the state in a lot of areas, and we're just grateful to do this with you guys.
And Buck Gilchrist, I'm also a recovering superintendent. Seventeen and a half years of the superintendency in several districts. I started at five hundred and seventy-five students and did twenty-seven thousand students. And the thing is, school to school. And so it really doesn't matter how big or small you are, you have to be able to manage and manage the performance of the organization. And so in full transparency, I grew up in West Fort Worth. And so, you know, when we wanted to see semi-rich girls, we'd go to the TCU area. When we wanted to see the really rich girls, we came to Arlington.
Oh, Lord.
That's a true story, absolute true story right there.
That's funny.
And then also I have a sister and a niece that work for Arlington.
I hope we were good to them.
Oh, they love it, yeah. No, they, they love it, so. So we're, yeah, we're just here mostly to have a conversation tonight. We do bring a PowerPoint. As Lloyd Graham that works with us says, if you rely on PowerPoint, then you really have neither power or a point. So we will use the PowerPoint for.
Why does that not surprise me?
That sounds like a Buckism. Yeah, it's kind of, we kind of go back and forth, so. So, so in between bites, and there's no order to this, but we would like for you to answer these three questions just to help us get to know you and some foundations to where we're going to go in this conversation. I always give the warning, I taught most of my career at middle school level, junior high level, so.
God bless you.
I have incredible wait time. I will wait you out.
Okay.
Anybody go?
I'll go. I ran for the board because my son was graduating. He went all the way K through twelve here in Arlington. He was graduating. I'd always been PTA, PTA president, psych-based decision-making team and all of that. And I just felt like I was going to be left out, that I wouldn't know what's going on. And I wanted to continue volunteering, but just in a different way. So I decided to run, and that was seven years ago.
What surprised you most as a board member?
How much time it takes. It really does. You know, not, you think, okay, well, two board meetings a month, but there's so much more to it than that. All the reading and the researching and the committee meetings, and it's just a lot more time than people think. People think we show up twice a month for a little meeting and then we go home. And a lot of people think, they ask, well, what is the pay? They don't realize that we're volunteers. So, but the time was probably a thing that surprised me the most. And then what do I hope to get out of this process? Just learn more, learn more about us, learn more about our roles and how we fit together as a board.
Are we going around?
You guys are going around people.
Melody volunteered you to go next, is the way that works.
I stopped eating because I figured we were going around. So I ran for the board because, I mean, I'm a current parent in the district, so I have a passion for the district. I had been involved for over a decade, but I had felt like I exhausted all avenues to be plugged in. They were still young enough, but I had moved up the chain of command pretty quickly in various things. I had served in multiple capacities and really developed a bigger interest in kind of what's happening up here at the admin building, how are decisions being made? Who is overseeing those decisions? So I decided to take a leap and run for the board. What surprised me the most, I mean, same as Melody, the depth of the work. I think what it takes to be a good board member versus just being a board member. So that was, that took me almost my entire first year to really grasp and figure out. So I think that has been the most surprising. Are we answering three?
Yeah.
Okay. What I hope to get out of this process, probably a more cohesive understanding of where we're all coming from and what our common goal is. I mean, I know we have the same common goal, but I don't think we've all ever vocalized it together. There you go, you can have it.
So a big part of our district, a lot of students are lower socioeconomic status. And so that was me growing up. And to be able to go back to the education was the one thing that helped me out of that. That's what I think that was. What surprised me the most is that new, because I'm new as of May of last year. Each school is like its own little city, and so we all have our own alliances. And if you make or even say anything about changing something at particular schools, you'll get emails while you're on the dimes. I have no idea who's lying there. And it is. What I hope to get out of the process, myself, Dr. Smith, and we attended a training session down at Oldsworth. And we looked at our strategic plan. I hope that we have a strategic plan that I can understand, you know, the direction that's going on, and something that, you know, reflects everything we're trying to do.
So I ran for the board because I grew up here. You know, I took the high school together, my wife and I went to high school together. And we grew up just over south of the General Motors factory. And so Arlington, very long time, has been divided socio-economically right down the middle by Cooper Street. And historically, most city leaders, board leaders have come from west of Cooper Street. And especially now, our average student lives east Cooper Street. And so I had an interest in serving. I was a teacher for a while before I went to law school and just come back and wanted to make a difference in education in my hometown, having seen those disparities and learning something about bridging the gap. So I've been on the board seven years now. And the thing that surprised me the most when I, when I got on the board, I think, was, as old as I had been, I think the time commitment and balancing everything was certainly one of them. I was also surprised how little, you know, folks know about what we do. I feel like we're always trying to get our message out about what we're trying to do positively. Even when I came on, we had just come off of the Workout Board of the Year, Marcelo Cabas has been Superintendent of the Year, we passed the major bond, our construction projects all over. But there were still these persistent questions about things that it seemed like we had been addressing for a while. And then I hope to get out of this process, just hope to learn more about each other, things we can do to work more effectively together.
You don't want us to answer, do you?
No, I mean, I didn't know if you were going to answer number three. I don't want to skip any of them.
All right.
I'm going to, why don't you become a superintendent? Can you change that from board to superintendent?
Wow, you're putting me on the spot. So the, I had a, an administrator say to me when I was a teacher, hey, you need to be an administrator. And I was like, I don't really want to be. I like coaching and teaching and swimming in my swimming pool on weekends and hours and that kind of stuff. And he, he just got me to go get my masters and started getting me excited about it. As far as the superintendent piece, I don't know that I ever set out to say I want to be a superintendent. I think there's a natural progression when you go through certain positions sometimes. The thing that mattered the most to me is having kids that go through the system, my own kids, and seeing how sometimes little I was able to influence the system for the benefit of all kids. It made me realize that certain positions have the ability to make change, and I was interested in that. And I wanted to be part of positive change for not just some kids, but every kid. As far as what I hope to get out of the process, for me, one of the key pieces of information the majority of our board shared with me when I first got here was, we have a strategic plan, but it might be time to reset that strategic plan because a lot of it focused on coming out of COVID. And we've got to make it what the current board wants. And so it's a shared direction. Ultimately, I want a community voice and a shared direction for us as a team so that we're all pointed in the same direction for the next few years. And we can thoughtfully allocate the resources, the support, and the, the energy to get some stuff done for the benefit of our community. That's the, that's what I'm looking for.
So I was new to Arlington in July of this year. My first time as a W E superintendent. I had come through the teaching and learning or curriculum rights and administration. I was in the Austin area for a very long time. My husband was transferred up here to the Dallas-Fort Worth area. And so I hopped around a little bit as we were relocating our family. And I'm very happy to be here in Arlington, working with this board and with this community. It just feels like such a great fit, so I'm just super happy to be here. I think what I hope to get out of the process is that we have some clearly articulated goals that empower the people in our system to make decisions headed towards those goals. I think right now we see a lot of leaders in the system who are looking to a new leader, saying, what do you want us to do next? Or does this, is this what we should be doing, yes or no? And I would hope that a strategic plan helps people catch the vision for where we're going and empowers them to make the decisions they need to make for their campus to move forward.
So good. So I ran for the board because I, I worked for Arlington ISD for twelve years, and I just really wanted to make a difference as a trustee in the same school district like Justin I came up through as a student. And so it's, that kind of goes hand in hand with what's surprising. Being on the other side of the curtain in the same district, right? Instead of being on staff, but being in the governance role, I have really learned a lot and seen firsthand how it all works together. And I, I have a whole new respect for the work that the superintendent does, being on a school board. Because when you're a classroom teacher, of course, you know the hierarchy of things, but you really do see firsthand the sacrifices and the workflow and every, the leadership and the risks taken and all the work of the superintendent. So that's what surprised me, and I was kind of a huge respect for you that. What do I hope I can get out of the process? I'm really excited about this work, and I really hope, in addition to everything that y'all have said, because I agree with everything so far, I hope that every staff member here at Arlington ISD can clearly articulate the work that they do, how it aligns with our strategic plan. I think that effective organizations and effective school districts, no matter what your role is, whether you're a classroom teacher, whether you're a custodian, whether you're a deputy superintendent, you can articulate how the work you do in your role is, is part of our collective goal and our collective work. And that's, just transparently, that's something that I think we missed the mark on last time. So I really want to, however that's done, I really want to, over the course of our work together, I want to make sure that that type of plan is born. Where everyone who works here can clearly articulate how the work they do is impactful and how it aligns to our district's strategic plan.
Hi. I am in my second year in my first term. I have two kiddos in the district. I have a eighth grade girl and a fifth grade boy. I think I come from a slightly different position because I'm not from Arlington originally. So I don't know a lot of the little holes and things that we step in sometimes here. I ran for the board, I always wanted to be on the school board, but I imagined that would be ten, twelve years down the road when my youngest was at college and had the free time. However, that got sped up dramatically when there were available seats and seeing what was happening in various school boards and what was going on in our own city. School board elections were becoming close to us, and it was becoming about parties and not students, not kids, not teachers, not families. And it really bothered me. The interesting part I will tell you is that my main job is I have a youth and children's minister. But at the same time, I know that is not where everybody aligns with their beliefs. I don't want to bring my own personal beliefs and force them on anybody, nor did I want anybody coming into the seat and trying to force their beliefs on our children and students. So it felt like it was the time to, I mean, it was something I prayed about, and I felt like it was not ten years away, it was right now. And as a family, we agreed because we knew it was going to be all of us going through it, just like any profile job. I really glad I did. I think it was the right time. What has surprised me the most? How many COGS are in our wheel in the district? There are so many little parts, and I am constantly amazed. When I ask a question or send an email, the response goes back of, we have to ask so and so in this area, this department. There are so many spider webs that go out to make us run. We do have power as a board, but we are not the overarching power. It's when it all comes together. So I've been really surprised by how many thinkers there are in the district and how everybody participates. What I hope to get out of it is a clear strategic plan that we know how to support and that we also are excited about. Because if we're not excited about, it's just going to be pushed to the side and not really discussed. I want to make sure that our excitement is contagious to others. I want to make sure that I know how to support it, but I also want to know how are we going to support it together as a office? It's, because we could all do it in different ways, but unless we come together and do it in a cohesive way, we're still all pulling in different directions.
I'll be brief on the first one, I'll try to keep them to twenty minutes. So why did I run for the school board? We, we realized, my wife and I had a pretty traumatic life event, and that brought us back to Arlington. And when we did, we realized how much connection we have here and how vital it was. It's a great city, but we had a great support network, and we couldn't think of, you know, we're going to move. Sky was the limit of our options of where we were going to move to when we moved back to the States. But we chose here for a reason. But we knew we needed, you know, Arlington wasn't perfect. We knew we needed to roll up our sleeves and be part of the solution to making Arlington better. And I started with Justin on financial futures. We noticed pretty early on when my son came in that there was a big difference between the relevant and rigorous educational opportunities my child or experience at the same school my son was going to. There was, you know, it just wasn't the same. And so my principal kind of steered me in, put me on committees, that's where I met Justin. And then for eight years, I served behind the scenes trying to make the system better. And when one of the trustees stepped down, I felt I finally had enough knowledge, because it takes a lot of knowledge, that I've been operational, knowledge of the district, that I could confidently run for the school board. What surprised me the most was governance is hard. Governance is really hard, especially in the school district. I argued with one of our colleagues who's now on city council, I don't know, if he agrees with me, he's like, city council's easy compared to your school board. And not only that, you have to have that knowledge, and as a layperson, you know, coming from the business community, oftentimes I'm like, not knowing, you're on the, on the Dunning-Prager scale, you're on the peak stupidity going, that should be easy to fix. And then the more you know, you, you kind of trudge through the valley of despair and finally get up where you're confident enough that you can make objective, you know, decisions on very important issues. And it takes a lot of work. And not only that, but being a cohesive team, it requires us to be a cohesive team, and having the right government framework is hard. What I hope to get out of this process, as Matt alluded to, we had a strategic plan that was done, had little input from the board. You know, hopefully that it was informed by our stakeholders in the system, but it really wasn't. And it was informed on a pandemic, as if the pandemic was going to be ongoing. And so when Matt got here, we knew there was systemic cracks in the system. The system is somewhat opaque to us, so we just knew hints. And so now that Matt's been here, he's been able to do a SWOT analysis, to me, it's imperative that we throw that plan out and create a new plan that's informed by that SWOT analysis to meet the challenges that we face. Knowing where we want to be, a premier school district where all kids graduate exceptionally prepared for college, career, citizenship, relevant, rigorous education opportunities. You know, how do we get there? And given the things that we need to address now. And we've kind of done this a little backwards out of necessity with Matt and adopted our priorities, but we, I personally feel confident with the second board. And that we get alignment with our strategic plan with those priorities and the SWOT analysis that Matt has done, Matt did in his first year. You know how important it is for your community to hear that what was just said? That's not rhetorical.
Which is?
All of it. All of it. It is so vital that your community understands why you're here, what it is you're trying to accomplish, because you don't want it to get lost in the noise. And I don't know if you know this, in today's world, there's lots of noise. But everything that was just said, if you're a parent or a constituent of this community, it should make you feel great. It really should. And so you guys, I know you do it for a large paycheck, right? But I do want to say it, I mean this, the words that kept coming in my head over and over while you were speaking is just thank you. You don't get that enough, but there are children whose lives you are changing, even right now. And, and even though you put up with the noise to get there, the word is, is thank you. And so we, there are people that do appreciate you standing in the gap for the children of this community. So just never forget that, right? Anybody, after everybody spoke, is there anybody who wants to add to that? Something heavy on that just got to be said?
I really liked what David said, that, or right now, the system has been somewhat opaque to us. And that stuck out to me because I do feel like there's times I just don't understand what's beyond the glass. And at times I've heard that's above your level, or that's below your level, that's not your view, that's not your, the Dr. Smith and Dr. Pauls have done a good job. And people who've been on the board with experience have explained times that, you know, this is why we do this, or this is how. And I think the more we've been informing our community, the hows and the whys, we all understand better.
Well, I'm, I'm really encouraged, just what you're hoping to get out of this process. You're speaking our language, you're talking about clearly articulated goals, making sure that whatever strategic plan is in place, that it's something you all can support, but more than that, that it's actionable. And that's what, what we're really proud about with the scorecard. We expect it to be actionable and measurable. That's the whole point of, of the scorecard. We're not going to rely on the PowerPoint, but we will reference it. If you've attended some of our SLI, I know some of you have attended our SLI sessions, some of this may be repeated, but it's worth repeating. We're W. Edwards Deming fans, and I love this quote, it's not enough to do your best, you have to know what to do, and then do your best. What's that mean for you guys, when you read that?
Say it a different way. What, what if the best you know how to do is not the, I mean, the best that you're able to do is not the best that you know how to do because, because of the system?
Yeah. Google, Google in 2012, they did a, conducted a research project internally, looking internally into their system, looking at a hundred of their highest performing teams within their organization. And the one common thing that resonated across all one hundred teams, what do you suppose, was the one thing that showed up in, in those one hundred teams that made them high performing?
Alignment to goals, probably, right? Clear focus, trust.
Number one thing was clarity, which is, you know, communication is a part of that, alignment is a part of that, but it's clarity, knowing what to do, knowing why we are doing it. And so when we get real clear and real focused about our purpose and what our, what our goals and expectations are within the organization, then that, then it's, then we're giving the charge to the team on what the expectations are.
Yeah, so I heard, I heard it said that we want everybody in the, in the system to understand what their piece of it is, right? And, you know, in my career, I was very, very fortunate in my career, and I got to meet a, one of the things fortunate was I got to meet a guy by the name of Phil Schlechtie, who was an author, was an author, wrote lots of books about what, and he asked me to be a part of his national superintendent council. Very, I have no idea why he picked me, but, but then he got to travel all over the United States, and we learned from all kinds of people, Mayo Clinic, Disney, Boeing, I mean, we, we just went to all these different places, NISA. And anyway, one, one time we went to the United States shipyard in Virginia where they build ships, right? And I don't know if you know, but they'd really lost their way after the Second World War. Because they, you know, they, they had this huge upswing, and they were, they knew what they were doing. So they had to have a reset, and they had to reset in the late eighties, early nineties about what they were actually there for. And so we went and listened to the administration tell, tell us what they were there for. And the great thing was, people would never let us just stop with the administration. He wanted to go here from the people that were doing it to see if that was really well attached, right? So we're walking along, and one of the guys at the very end has, you know, one of the final jobs of working with these boats. And so we walk up to him, and, and he's a welder, he's doing some very specific welding. And so Phil's with me in the group, and he, he says, sir, what do you do? And the guy looked, he was down, he looked up at us, and I'll never forget this as long as I live, he said, well, I built battleships to keep America free. Not I weld this piece on here, not that I make it, you see? So it filtered down all, all the way. Anyway, the next, the next part's what really got it, though, was we're about to walk off, and I noticed on the back of the stool box, he had a bumper sticker. And it said, and I quote, beat it to fit, paint it to match. And I said, I said, well, tell me about that. And he said, well, I keep that on there to remind me the way things were before we reset our aggression. And he said, that's what we did, was beat it to fit, paint it to match. And he said, and in education, y'all still kind of do that, don't you? And you know what? It's right.
Yeah.
And so, so what our encouragement here is, not only does it filter all the way through the system for Arlington ISD, because you're unique, there is not another Arlington ISD. Have you ever thought about that?
Not really.
There's not.
It's true.
You are unique, and, and your, your children are unique, your parents are unique, your community's unique, your business owners, it's all, I mean, who else has? It's all, I mean, who else has entertainment venues like you have in your school district? Think about this for for that instance, right? And so so as you're talking about how you're gonna build your plan forward as as this team of eight. How you're gonna build the strategy to move forward for this community and the uniqueness of the community? You have to honor that, right? But at the same time, you have to make sure that everybody understands up and down throughout the system what it is that that you, you know. The the worst thing that can happen, coach, is when the coach understands what the game plan is, but nobody else does. You ever thought of it that way? I mean, how long do they last?
Not very long.
Not very long, right? So anyway, so here we are, we're we're just gonna start with the end in mind for you guys. Uh it's gonna be some sort of performance management tool. We use a combination of Kaplan's balanced scorecard. Uh and underneath that scorecard, everybody has a role, but not everybody's in every role. And so there is a role for the board, there's a role for the senior leaders, and then there's a role for the community. And so uh and we'll, yeah.
Yeah, we all have a copy of the the scorecard and I think it's important that we sort of talk through this and. Where where the different roles live, who who lives in what part of this uh board? And then we also um uh as we start this discussion, we want to get some clarity here for you all. Uh in terms of, as we start talking about priorities, um you know, do do the um, what do you all call them? Your your priorities, are these priorities going to become the priorities that are 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 within the strategic plan? We'll we'll have more conversation on that, but you notice in the the great part at the top. This is typically the work that we do with the community. Um I noticed in your board policies, I believe you have uh belief statements, you all have core beliefs. And I think the question that we're going to ask you all tonight is um, do do we carry those core beliefs over into the current strategic plan? Or would you like to engage your community in developing new um belief statements? That align to what we believe about students, what we believe about parents and families, that.
Show me a question first.
Yes.
This was designed in twenty twelve, I think Zellin's got on the board. Yeah, we've gone through three strategic plans, so none of this.
Is relevant.
So did y'all get a copy of our current strategic plan?
We have a copy of it. But this is what's in your policy, so that's another question.
There's a gap, uh there's a lot of gaps in policy and practice around here.
Yeah, they'll legal. Yeah, this is, yes.
This is our local policy?
This is Arlington's local policy and if it's outdated, probably something you want to revisit. This is the time to do it and we certainly help you with that um as we're talking through this. So uh so again, your community could be involved in the development of new belief statements. I think that's a a great way to engage your community in this process.
We do believe you need to engage your community, because we think there's four roles. And and we're gonna talk about those four roles through the through the scorecard with you. There are four roles in any organization and the first is the organic role, the why, why are you here? And your community is why you're here. If you don't have the community of Arlington, you don't have, there's no reason to have a school district. Ask those guys in West Texas. Right? With without a community, the school districts are are gone and without a school district, the community is gonna be, they're symbiotic, it's your watch, the organic reason why you're here. And so uh we would highly encourage you to to engage your community in conversations. We have tools that we've developed that help that conversation be guided. And so uh it's not just standard to mine, can't write about everything, you know, that my son didn't get enough playing time, right? It is uh it is focused on on what it is that you believe as a community.
And you know, one of the things, one of the best things I think we did is when we were doing our superintendent search. We had focus groups, not only with employees, but the community. And we told, we showed them what we thought we were looking for in a superintendent. And then they responded of the things that they thought were the most important. And I think we already got that that buy-in from them, they felt like they were part of it. And that they were establishing what we needed in a superintendent, so I think that's one of the best things we've done.
And we'll talk about um because you are such a large district, how many high schools are we?
Six traditional.
Six traditional, yeah.
Two others, two early, three others.
So we we need to maybe also talk about uh how we want to engage the community. Do we do it like by high school, is there a feeder, like clear feeder patterns or how how we want to do that? To make sure we give as much voice to this process as possible and we want your input in that. The other thing that we typically will uh engage the community in, and 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 again, this is dependent on where you all are at. When was the last time your mission and vision statements were um were visited or considered? And 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 is is it time to, you know, validate or um refine it or redo it? I think that's a question for this board and and what we need an understanding from you on how you want to do that. But typically, we would engage the community in that conversation as well um to get their voice in terms of vision, vision and mission. And then you want to talk about that?
So we, so you're, the perspectives, we we, again, we use this as a uh from Kaplan and order's work. Um they've taken uh some some Deming work and created a spreadsheet for it, basically. And so we feel like there are four perspectives, some people put five. Uh but we feel like, I and I looked back at your priorities and all all five, your priorities folded into one of those areas, right? Uh but uh we we think the, you get students, you got staff, you have stakeholders and you have stewardship. Those four areas, right? And so then then under each of those perspectives, you have objectives. And guess who is responsible for um telling us what those objectives are? I'm gonna give you a hint, they're here tonight. Okay? So you guys are, the strategic team is responsible for the what it is that you want to get accomplished in the district. You got the why, right, from your community. We're gonna listen to the community, we're gonna define the what. And that, and then you guys are gonna adopt the what formally. And and so here's here's what we're asking these guys to do. And superintendent and his team is gonna go and they're gonna tell you, here's the actions we're gonna take. These, this is the how, we're gonna get accomplished what you've asked us to accomplish, right? And then the progress measures um are gonna be put in place so that you can measure along the way. And then your ultimate outcomes at the end, and that's done by now, now the operational team. They're gonna, they're gonna take that and here's the results of what what they're doing. So you got the why, you got the what, you got the how, and you got the now. Now, now let's go do it. So it clearly defines roles within that system, right? So everybody understands where we're, what 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 my role is in meeting these strategic objectives. What are your thoughts?
And for for each perspective, we typically recommend uh three performance objectives per perspective. At least, uh not more than five, but typically three, right, three to five.
Well, if everything's important.
Then nothing.
Nothing's important, nothing's really.
How are the perspectives? Well, first of all, why are they named perspectives? Can you help me understand?
You can change it, we, people use priorities, people use, people use cornerstones, goals.
So they could be these. They could be these, yes, right?
Okay, now typically, so you'll notice our, the four that we typically anchor on, students, staff, uh community, stakeholders. Um and stewardship. And so when I look at your priorities, academic growth, to me, that's clear, that's that's priority one or perspective one. Uh marketing engagement, to me, when I read the the verbiage, it fits under priority three or perspective three. Resources is perspective four. Culture and discipline, and this is just me talking out loud, but this is this is up to you all. Culture, I I don't see anything very specific for faculty, although culture addresses faculty and 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 safety and discipline. Addresses faculty and I, my wonder is, do we include those as strategic objectives? Within those perspectives, the the student perspective and the staff perspective? Or would you prefer to have, replace um? Would you prefer to have these as the perspectives, like perspective, prior or not prior, priorities, priority one, two, three, four, five?
Yeah, I think, I think these fold into under one of these, right? Safety and discipline is definitely a student performance perspective.
Yeah.
It it, it's an objective under that. We want our students to feel safe, right? Uh and we want good, we want our students to, we want to have, for faculty and staff especially, to establish an equitable discipline program.
So if I can jump in real quick, I think one of the most important things for me, trustees, we've talked about this individually and collectively. At the beginning of this process, I want your voice to be heard, we have a new board from where you were the last time. These priorities that we developed, we developed between June and September of this year to guide us really this year. While we knew we would end up going up for a strategic plan and we tried to create some alignment with ideas that we thought might be. Um sustaining messages that we would want to hear in the system and that we would hear. That idea of academic growth isn't gonna go away, we're a school system. We we can call it something else, but it's going to sustain. But I need our trustees to know, we are not married to those five priorities right now. And this is our opportunity to decide those things. If you want to fold those in and continue that, it makes total sense to me. But I also want to make sure that we are valuing your voice in this is is a board right now. Because I think, and I heard it earlier, that's one of the things maybe we felt was missing in the strategic plan. So please, this is this is the spot to talk about, if you think these priorities align with what you want to see, if you want to make some adjustments. If you want to go about it in a different way, this is, it's wide open for us to talk about.
Absolutely, so let's, so let's just take academic growth as an example and see how it can be in this system. So uh performance objective one point one, every student grows at least one academic year. That's the strategic objective under under students, right? So then your key strategic actions. Dr. Collins, what are you gonna do? Reliable and aligned curriculum, right?
Professional learning.
Professional learning. What, so.
Assessments, aligned assessments.
Yeah, aligned assessments, right? So then how are you gonna know that in the interim? Do you use maps? Do you have district based uh assessments? So so that would be your your progress measures and then your long-term outcomes are gonna be. State mandated scores, SAT scores, ACT scores. So so you're taking your priority, number one, and you're folding it into this in a measurable measurable means.
Can can I just toss something in the pan, just kind of jump to our our conversation with what that would look like? I kind of want to keep these as perspectives. It took a lot of discussion and thought and and collaboration to even come up with these.
They were already to kill me at one meeting, I think, in the middle of the meeting.
And like so.
Can we talk about this?
Yeah, and like I, for for a couple months now, because we adopted these now, time flies. I've gotten good feedback from parents and teachers that I know around these priorities. So I feel like we're off to a good start. I'm I'm inclined to say that I would want these to be the perspectives. That's just me, that's just me, just trying to jumpstart the conversation.
I would agree with Sarah. And then at the same time, I look at like my whole thing is we've got to have coherence, strategy across the system. And this captures the three hundred and sixty degree view of the system, these four perspectives. But I I like what Sarah said because the thing that makes us unique, my goal for this whole strategic plan. Is that we get a strategic plan that is specifically geared to those big systemic cracks in the system that we now know. And have been validated with Matt's SWOT analysis. Culture and strategy for lunch, he told us that in his interview. He met us at breakfast or dinner or something like that, all day long, something, what, take your variant. So to me, culture rises to the level of a top priority that's, you know, top level. Because that's a big one and it takes, it's gonna take time, right? And uh. So I do like this framework and I do think some of these, we had a lot of debate about marketing. Marketing's very important because it needs some help. But really, it, we we said in the meeting, it's really more of an objective under. Number three. And it's a big one, it's one that needs a lot of work. But you know, do we need to elevate it to replace number three?
If you, you can get to it, if you call the, if you just use these names as your five, they make five perspectives. It's it's the same concept, right? Academic growth is still gonna be.
That's that's really, number one, yeah.
And you're gonna have two, you know, three to four underneath there, because you're also gonna include uh CCMR, uh you know.
Housebill three goals.
Housebill three goals, all of those things, right? Uh and then your culture is can can easily fit under, worse perspective two is, it's just gonna be inclusive of. You know, faculty and staff culture, you're gonna have student experience culture, uh all of all of those things, right? So and then safety and discipline.
So instead of four, prior respect, we're calling it perspectives there, but instead of four, you all would have thought it. You want to preserve these. And when you, when you, when we look at your key progress measures. Um it's almost, you you all have pieces already of strategic actions. Um you already have a head start on your strategic plan, some of these things are actually action strategies. That can be embedded as part of this, if these are still the things that we want to uh focus on. So I think that's just for us, um if this is the direction and you all want this to be your, maintain these as your priorities. Then that's how we'll build the scorecard with those five priorities. I'd like to see us do that.
I I think there's one that I wanted to bring up, because I I think it was our last one that we really debated on whether or not it should be on there or not. And that is about the student experience and I think that mattered a lot to in our discussions. So that's one thing that I, it, we continue to hear about that in our system. And so I wanted to make sure I brought that to the table and had y'all weigh in on that too, that's one, that's one that.
Yes.
Is that culture? So talk, talk to us more about what you're thinking needed.
Just, I mean, I do love these and we've had all the debate, you guys can go watch the video to get caught up on all the debate that happened on all of our perspectives. But if we're talking about going out and getting buy-in from the community, this doesn't reflect our students. I mean, I know it does because we want them safe and we want them to perform academically and we want good culture. I'm gonna tell you, my senior in high school, she's not gonna care about those, she's not gonna feel like we took her perspective as a student. Into account with just what's here. We know as adults that we are, but they're not gonna feel that way. We don't recognize that we're providing opportunities for them to get certifications and go down all these different avenues. We have all these experiences that we're not prioritizing. And so I would love more about what we offer in extracurriculars, what we offer in making them a well-grounded whole student, not just academic growth.
And I'll share with you why I brought this up is I've been, I probably shouldn't have done this today, but I did. I've been wrestling with, really starting to look at, why, why do we have declining enrollment in our school district? Where are our kids going and why? And I think we've got a, we really have to answer the question about what's the experience that our kids are seeking elsewhere? That they're not getting in Arlington ISD? We've been losing kids for over a decade. And we've got to figure, in my mind, I've got to figure that out to be able to say, what is it the parents and students are looking for that they're looking somewhere else? Because we should be, we should be providing that in the school system.
So especially in light of increased competition, let's say vouchers, I forbid passes. Like our job in to judge folks if they decide to go to Oak Ridge or homeschool or whatever. Our job is to make sure they make Arlington ISD their first choice. It's, you know, so that means we gotta put a better product out there. And so we do need to be product focused, which is taking in that student perspective is key. Because they're the ones that live and breathe the product every single day. And so, yeah, I I tend to agree with you, yes.
So if if you all will look at the handout, don't look at that one, because that's sort of a miss. So if, if you all will look at the handout, don't look at that one on me because that's sort of a misversion of this. But if you look at how they're numbered, so for example, under student, the, the, the way you named that priority, what we would probably put instead of student is academic growth or student academic growth. That would be the, the name of it. Right now you have one, um, to me, one, potentially one strategic objective here, which has to do with academic growth and igniting a passion for learning. That might be one point one. But then my next thought is, so what's one point two and one point three? Is one point two something specific to student experience? Is one point three specific to safety and discipline or are we going to, I think we're going to keep that separate. What's the other one point three? Maybe, uh, uh, CCMR maybe, it's your college career military readiness. If that's some, I mean, I'm just saying, it depends on what's, what you all feel deemed as the most important things. So when we're talking about students in general or academic growth, remember there's three strategic objectives. So it's not just the one that you have.
Right.
There's still two more to come. What are those two? So, and then we start to identify what are the action strategies. You'll notice we recommend, you know, we have these three action strategies to address that goal or that strategic objective, if that makes sense.
So it, so it seems to me this is, it's, it will be difficult to take this format and try to translate it to this. I'll, I'll be honest, I'm not married to this. I know we had a bunch of debate, but I see something that looks better, that makes it easy. Because this to me says, under students, every student can read exactly what we're trying to do. Under staff, every staff can read what we're trying to do, stakeholders, finance operations, like it's, it is, there's clarity. A hundred percent when it's here, it's like this. And so you have to pick and choose what fits where. That's why, I mean, we've got, I think this was a good starting point because we weren't ready for a strategic plan yet until now. And I think this can be broken apart. And what is this?
Yeah, this is solid work and there, we, we've looked at this and almost everything in here fits somewhere in here. And, and if it doesn't, it may just need to be reworded to fit in here. But I can't, but I don't think we abandoned any of this. I think it fits.
I agree with what Larry just said because I, when you're saying you're not married to it, I do think we had really good discussion. I also know that I went home and processed what we talked about afterwards. Because in the moment, you know, you were hearing, you're listening, but over time to really take it in. This to me is way more digestible, especially for our students and our stakeholders. Once we start reading some of these numbers and stuff, people go a little bit, they're not really agree. I love the fact that we could break this table we did, the good work and the thoughts we put into it. Maybe we see things a little bit differently now that we've had a little time to step back and look at it and put it into something like this that is digestible.
And, and, and this is just hopeful thinking, but having this three hundred and sixty degree view by making sure we've got all of the system captured allows us, how, it ensures that we're going to have a better chance at coherence of strategy when it gets down to a chance to.
I can get behind that. I have a question though about how something would play out. Because culture, for example, that's not for one group. We, we want to prioritize culture for everyone.
You have objectives intertwined.
So would that just mean some information on this is repeated from multiple stakeholders? Yeah, you can have, one of your strategic objectives for students can be culture. Okay. Uh, one for staff could be culture. You don't lose any of this, but it becomes embedded in the, in the areas where it.
But your culture, your culture means different things.
Absolutely, yeah.
So you, so under students, you're really talking about the student experience, right?
Absolutely. I can get behind that. I'm just not comfortable with, with abandoning any of this. Because it's foreadopted and it took a lot of discussion and input. And as long as it plays out in here, I can do fine.
I like the five that we have there. I think that's, but I think there's a little thing we could plug into.
Absolutely.
Because the more I slept on it, and what you talked about with the student experience is what I'm saying, like I stepped away and I had some time to think about. And I do think it needs to be laid out in a different way and very clear.
But even, so let, I mean, so the culture, you're going to talk about the staff experience.
I mean, a lot of times I, I, I think mainly staff culture needs to be improved. Because I feel like if the teachers and the staff want to be there, that will have an absolute impact on the kids.
So if your intertwined, if your culture, if your staff culture is about recruiting the best.
And retaining.
Uh, retaining the best, right? And then polishing everybody in the system. That, that's a different culture than you're talking about the student experience. Uh, of what they're going to see. But then I'm going to say even the third one is what's the, what's the culture impact of your community, of your other stakeholders? Of the seventy percent of your community that does not have school-aged children?
Yeah.
Seventy percent.
Okay, and those are the ones that matter to us, especially when we come up to financial reasons and we say we need to pass a bond. Well, we don't have kids in your school, so why should, we don't care because we don't have active students. We need to make sure that they understand.
I, I am one of those without school-aged children. You know, when I hear from my school district that I live in?
Bonds.
October, I hear from them every October when they send me the bill, right? That I, that is still sitting on my desk at home because I don't pay it till January thirty first. But that's another story, right? But, and so how, how do we get engaged? How, how do we build the culture of the community? I love that word culture, I'm still, uh, I love the word cult. So how do we, how do we build a community culture that is encompassing around the school district? Because you got all these little communities within the school district that have their own culture. So let's use that.
So one of the best things that Matt did when he came aboard, he had us all, don't look so surprised.
I, I, this is great. Let's call it a beating over right now.
One of the best things he did is he had this executive staff cabinet and then he had all of us read the culture code with him. And that book changed a lot for me as I. And we talked about it online, we had teachers go out and buy it. And it really helped me understand what a true culture shift would be, not just for our students, but our, our families and our teachers as well. And when I say teachers, what I mean is staff, from custodians all the way up to principal. Their culture matters and we see it at schools right now. When they don't have a lot of turnover, what is normally, what do they have going for them? They have a good culture. They have a good day-to-day experience, not just, oh, you got a four percent raise this year. But that campus has something unique and special. When you go to the campuses with a higher turnover rates, what's going on? Well, it could be a lot of things, but normally what you can all follow is culture is crazy. There is so much, what can we do to replicate that?
And in our board meeting, we kind of talked about how the culture, it honestly was part of our criteria for our superintendent search. We talked about how that was kind of a wraparound priority because student achievement, the student experience, a lot of this, it kind of hinges on that culture. And, and a healthy prioritization of maintaining a good culture, a lot of it hinges on that.
So, but I think we also know, or at least I think I'm aware that you can't take this group that has this great culture and say, great, we're going to bottle you up and now we're going to do it again. That's not feasible and that doesn't look works everywhere. So we have to figure out how do you take healthy and sustainable culture and make it applicable at each campus.
So you, so within these, within these priorities, within these perspectives, we're going to write down what it is that we want to see so that he knows what you want him to go do. Because, because, but if everything, if everything's important.
And a lot of this work has already started. That's another reason why I don't want to abandon what we have here and, and it can live somewhere else, but I just don't want to take it away because a lot of this work is already.
Absolutely.
Didn't this have a, like a shelf life or a timeline now?
So those key progress measures are, are all supposed to be deliverables for this year.
Yeah.
So by the end of this year, we should have these things reported out to you all and the progress that we made on those things we agreed on. But this strategic plan that you're adopting is really about looking forward from here on out.
So these would be like progress measure, measures, I would imagine.
Yeah.
This is something to carry on after he delivers on all of these, essentially.
What I think, and, and what I think I'm hearing you all say is if we can name some of these things that are important for the board to show up, whether they show up in perspective or performance objectives, might not matter. As long as they're reflected in the plan that we're working to move things forward, like culture, it, it might be that we break it out and articulate the culture that we want our parents to experience when they experience our system, and our students and our staff. And as long as you all see those things, you're comfortable wherever they, wherever they fall in whether it's a perspective or a performance objective, et cetera. Is that fair?
That's, yeah. Because in reality, this turns into a communication tool for you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right? And your staff and that, and, and in September, you're going to talk about student performance. This is where we finished last year and we're going to give a report at the September board meeting on where our kids were at, as, as we finished last school year, right? And then you're going to come back in January and give a mid-year report on that same perspective, priority, goal, whatever you want to call it. But you're going to list, you're going to put all three of the objectives in there. So, so part of the objective is the student experience that you're going to talk about. Last year we had this many kids in extracurricular activity. This year we have this many kids in extracurricular activities. This is what our extracurricular, I mean, uh, because then it turns into not just a, a reporting tool for you, a communication tool for all of you to go to the community and say, hey, let me tell you the really cool stuff that's going on. And then, and then the next month is staff. We're going to talk about staff, we're going to talk about culture, we're going to talk about survey results. We're going to talk about, uh, you know, the professional development that we offered that, that other people didn't have. And, and so it gives you a really great reporting. And then that community group that we talked about engaging at the beginning, we're going to recommend that you keep that group together and meet with them on a monthly basis as well. And give them the exact same report that the board got. So that now they are armed with that information to go out back to the community as your emissaries and say, hey, let me tell you what we heard, what the kids were.
So board, what I, what I have talked to you about is this idea of community-based accountability system. Being able to say, here's what matters to our community and we're going to hold ourselves accountable to what matters to our community and report out on it, talk about it. It, it, our board meetings.
Yes.
It are, in my chamber presentations and all of the above, like this is what we're trying to achieve. Here's how we're, here's how we're doing. So that's the, it's, that's the alliance.
So I want to make sure I, I've heard clearly that, that you all are comfortable with these four buckets. Students, staff, stakeholder stewardship. And, and ensuring that these items that y'all have worked on are somehow embedded where than other.
We can read, like, the number one, number one can be, uh, student growth, student academic growth and experience.
Yeah.
Right? You can put that in the title, but then your objectives will be laid out individually.
And I think I heard Sarah say that, like, some of those make sense if we can rename them the perspectives and, and put it in there. It totally makes total sense. And for the ones that don't, as long as we can show that they're showing up in those performance objectives and strategic areas, I think our board feels comfortable with that. Is that fair? Okay. And then the, the one other thing that I think I heard so far is we've got to make sure that that idea of the student experience is reflected in some of these performance objectives as well.
Absolutely.
How are y'all feeling?
Good.
Now, the next, we'll go to the next slide and we'll talk about them. So that's really, so what we're talking about, the, the majority of our conversations tonight has been about that first, that first part of there, right? We've got to set those priorities, objectives, actions, measures, both leading and lacking. But then it turns around into execution of that. How do you manage performance and execute the management of that performance? And so we, we firmly believe that that community advisory committee is, is vital to keep, to keep going and keep engaging them. Keep, keep them to be your biggest, uh, what's Blanchard calling it, rating fans? Not, not just fans, but you mean rating fans, right?
Versus ranting.
Yes. The ones that will just get on, on Facebook and un, unprovoked and say, I got to tell you the really cool stuff going on in Arlington ISD. That's what you're building, right? But then we, we think then, uh, this is another part that sets, I think, sets us apart differently than others. So we do think there's twice a year, four times a year, six times a year, twelve times a year, it's up to you, you'll, you'll make that decision. Where this board sits with the cabinet and starts talking about how we're, what those actions really look like throughout, throughout the district. So that you're armed with the information as you go out to say, well, yeah, no, I understand. We put in that reading program, but let me tell you, let me tell you what it's doing, how it's supposed to be implemented, what the purpose of it is. And so then there's a real connection from his office filtered all the way out through the district so everybody understands.
Your specialty store.
Hey Sam, can you help us out with that? So board, I'll add on to that. Well, Buck just talked a little bit about, about this idea of sitting kind of arm-in-arm with staff. That's the why behind some of the workshops that have been happening so far. Because we've been trying to make sure we're bringing staff in, getting used to working with each other. Some have gone well, some are not perfect yet and I, I hope everybody understands that. But the idea is to be able to take whatever we're working on, on this strategic plan, coming together once a month, once every other month, however, however you want it. To be able to sit kind of arm-in-arm and say, here are the things that we're working on, here's the objective that we're trying to achieve, here are the things that we're working on. And to give you that, that level of update along the way, not just from us presenting it at ISD or presenting it at a podium to you all, but to kind of sit arm-in-arm on some of those things.
And will we be able to look at those progress measures and really, one of the things I think we've done, we've not had the opportunity to do is when something's not going well and the progress measures, you know, are going this way, ask the hard questions of like, okay, do we keep the current plan? Do we abandon the current plan and come up with plan B?
It's, it's similar to what we had the other day in our most recent workshop where we have, we're working toward one of your key progress measures that you've adopted. We gave you where we are right now and we asked you for input on those things so that we can get to that final product. The ultimate thing is when we, when we shift some of these things, you'll have clear measures that we're progressing to along the way. You'll be able to sit, we'll be able to sit there and say, here's our data so far. What are your ideas as a board? What are you hearing? What can we do from your perspective? We'll share what we can do from our perspective and then we talk about those next steps. So that's the, that's the why behind why we started using that workshop for this.
I think that it's important then, back to the scorecard, the board's going to adopt those first two columns, but you're not adopting the actions.
Right.
No, that's their role. Because if it's not, if, if, if what they're doing is not working, they don't need to have to wait for a board meeting to come back and change that. They need to be able to pivot immediately and, and make those changes. And so now the conversations about what they are and when we're going to pivot and all that, that, those are conversations, but that's not, it's not board action.
Right. Can I ask a question for you? Because I don't know that I heard this at the beginning and you, you mentioned the community advisory committee. But you also mentioned the community input on some things at the beginning. Where does the community help inform this? Because I think in some processes, you see a strategic planning group go out to the community and then the board gets a plan at the end. And then the board has to adopt. I think this, this board feels very strongly about community engagement in this plan. But I think us being able to understand where that shows up is really important.
Good segue.
Oh, sorry.
And again, what we, you referenced what's in gray is typically when we start having community meetings, we will, um, as Buck said, we have tools to, to garner information about what they're looking for in terms of release statements. And if we're doing mission and vision, and I think these are the things that we need agreement on tonight, what you want from your community around these things. But we also, with each group, um, the community groups will do a SWOT analysis. I know y'all have done SWOT analyses before.
In the district.
But.
We, we, when we get that group together, we're going to do a big SWOT analysis so that we hear. And then we have another way of approaching the SWOT with some a little different level of questions. That we'll ask them to tell us, uh, we'll, we'll ask them to tell us what's the greatest benefit the district provides for students, staff and community? And what's a benefit that's missing for students, staff and community? And then we're going to ask the infamous, what should the district start doing? What should they stop doing? And, you know, what, what should they continue to do? And so then we listen to all of that, not saying we're going to do it, right? It's because we don't know. But that will then, that will help you make sure that you're refining your priorities and your objectives. that will help you make sure that you're refining your priorities and your objectives to what the community is saying at the same time. And we do that. So you don't have to do that. We, we will lead those conversations. So, you know, if, if it gets tough, it's us, not, not you guys having to lead that.
The SWOT analyses, we'll do, we'll do that with this group, with the board.
And they've already, you've already done one, right?
That was just me entering the district, but I think we should.
Well, yeah. And then the senior leader team, the cabinet, will do that with the larger cabinet group. And then we do that with the community. What's interesting is we start to put it all, we chart it all out. What is everybody saying? We start to look for common themes that everybody's saying. Those are kind of the big rocks that start to emerge that may be what you all want to anchor on or focus on for strategic objectives. But it's a, it's, it's a tool. It's an informational tool that it can be useful guiding your goal setting.
And then beyond that, the, well, it won't look for me, I guess. So let's go over here.
You tell me where you want to go. I'm a control guy. I want, I want to drive. Yes.
So then, so then that leads us directly to this. So we're, we're going to measure the trust of this team in here. We're going to measure the trust of the cabinet within itself. And then we're going to measure the trust between the cabinet and this board. And so, and we have a way to do that where we get, we get a night, we have, it's a very good tool, a time-honored tool.
You've already, I, I know that the inventories are ready.
Yeah, you've already, you've already seen it. But you can see how when we spread that out to different things and then start comparing, we make sure that the trust is there. I, I tell people in a, in a district this size, if the superintendent or a board member sneezes or a cabinet member sneezes, there are people in your district that think you have coke. The district has a coke. And so if you guys can't come together, you don't, you know, you don't have to be best friends. You don't have to all hang out every night, but you have to trust each other and you have to trust your senior leaders. And if, once you can establish that trust there, everybody else will see that. And we can show you lots of districts where that's not happening. And, and you can imagine the struggles that are going on inside, inside the district, right?
Do you want to go back to that last slide and, and the discussion points and just get some agreements on?
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah.
Let's, and then we'll go back to. So in terms of mission statement, vision, beliefs, are you, do you want to retain what you currently have for your, for those three things? I, I believe, let me see, per context, I can believe what we have.
Yep. Yep. Um, so I'm looking at our current strategic plan.
Yep.
Um, powered by possibilities. Mission, the mission of the Arlington ISD is to empower and engage all students to be contributing, responsible citizens striving for their maximum potential through relevant, innovative and rigorous-like experiences. Vision, the Arlington ISD will be a premier school district and a leader in education. Beliefs, our success depends on, and there's four bullets. Bullet one, a commitment by all to clear and, to a clear and focused vision. Number two, effective teaching and leadership. Number three, a positive culture that promotes continuous improvement by all. Number four, an engaged community. Our students can excel.
Well, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm reading this for our.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm reading this.
And, and this is how I feel about that one is I vote the two previous to that that had a different mission and vision.
Well, and we also.
To me that those were rock solids. And I said, you want to keep those? I would like to see move back to what we used to have.
And this isn't on here, but we also.
Some variant of it.
Uh, we also have a goal.
Yes.
The goal is 100% of Arlington ISD students will graduate exceptionally prepared for college, career and citizenship. I think that that statement, no matter what its name, I think that statement is the one that I think most of our folks have familiarity with, famili, familial, I can't say the word.
Yeah.
And that's been the one that's kind of withstood several strategic plans because our former superintendent said until we achieve that, that's going to be our North Star goal.
That is our North Star goal.
But could that become your mission statement then? The mission of Arlington ISD is to ensure students graduate exceptionally prepared for college, career and citizenship. Does that? I liked it.
And I, I would, I would even keep the 100% because all means all.
All means all, 100%. And I don't know if we incorporate the, through relevant, rigorous educational opportunities.
But I'm interested to hear.
Yeah. So did the community have the opportunity to jump in?
Yes.
This was all crafted by the.
That was crafted from the community. And the very first strategic plan, or maybe not, that was the very first strategic, yeah, it was.
I was just asking how long ago that first one would have been.
So, yeah, it's time to go out to the community to prepare for that again. Because it was, it was 2013.
Yeah.
Yeah, it started. It was a three-year plan in 2013 and in 2015, we did the five-year plan. And so those were, as Sarah said, that was the through line through all of the strategic plans. But that's the one thing everyone, I think, that in the community that I've talked to agrees with, is what every former trustee and a lot of the current trustees, when you say, what's our mission? We quote the goal and not the mission.
That's true.
Because it's our North Star goal. I'm more about this book, thanks to your husband. And like, to me, it all comes down to the North Star goal. That's the most important thing. That's our North Star goal. That should drive all of the work we do as a district and as a trustee.
The, so I think, but to your point, Larry, we might have had really good community engagement on that, but that, it sounds like that was about 2013.
Yeah. And so I say that, like, I'm not married to any of this. I wasn't there. And I've said multiple times, this is a different board. We've got a new head coach. When all this was created, it was an old head coach. So we're working with, trying to get a playbook, players, new everything. So I'm perfectly fine with, yeah, we've got the history. Let's hit it out.
How do we improve on it?
Yeah.
Also, we're in a world post-pandemic, but I feel like that alone took everything else shook it up. And now what do we come back to?
And I like the sentiment behind the exceptionally prepared. It's warm, it's fuzzy, but what does exceptionally prepared mean? Like, I have questions as a parent. I think it's fluffy and lovely.
Well, see.
What does it mean?
Or to me, you know.
When they used to say that to me, I'd ask Bowie and Hibbs, what does that mean? What, what is the expectation for my kids? What is exceptionally prepared mean? And when you, and when we miss the goal, what are we doing?
Yeah, I.
That's really cute, but how are you, I, I, I alone can think of 10 kids that I know that did not graduate exceptionally prepared for anything.
I mean, because to me, it sounds great, but if it had as much power as it did behind it, we would have 64,000 students instead of the decline. I mean, that's, that's rough.
So what, I mean, the, what, we, we see this a lot where they just, when we come, after we get through with beliefs and the conversations with the SWOT that we have the first night with the community and let them have opportunity to, to think it over. And we come back and we ask them, do they, you know, is it, is it what the community thinks? Do we need to tweak it? Do we need to start over? And it really becomes a, a community that they say, they say what to do with it, right? And I will say this, it's about 50/50. Half the time, they say, you know what? That's, that's exactly, you're, we've, we've had it right for a long time. Let's just keep it. Or, you know what? It's almost right. We need to add a word about how we measure it. You know, here, or another time, they say, you know what? We just want to start all over. But then, once you do that, then it belongs to the community. And whether, whether it's what you keep or not, if you keep it, then it now belongs to the community of today. If you change it, it belongs to the community of today.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for tweaking it, but you ask any district across the United States, their moral imperative or North Star goal, whatever you want to call it, is essentially the same for every school system in the United States. It's just those other words help shape it to what we want, our aspiration for our children, what the parents' aspiration for their children are and what the savannas of the world want for themselves. So, and I, you know, I think a lot of work went into it. I think it's quite stood the test of time. A lot of really good quality work went into it back then. Justin and I were on the committees that helped steer the first strategic plan. And I think they did do a good job. But it is 10, 13 years, so it is time to add feedback perspectives, like from, as a current parent, we in, Sarah and Brooklyn, and Larry becomes from a totally different perspective. And, but it's imperative that we go out to the community and get their input.
I agree.
So let, let's talk about community advisory for a minute.
Yeah.
Because in a district this size, now we've worked with, we've worked with groups of two, two to 250 people in the room. We can do that. And so y'all need to figure out if you want to do one large group or if you want to break it up into feeder patterns first and then bring those groups together for, for a, you know, an ending. You know, we, we can do it bilingually.
That's important.
And so.
And our just, it means, and I even suggest that there may be a trilingual, our east side of town, the population over there, it may need to be done in a third language.
They usually don't let, they don't let me speak Spanish because with this accent, it turns into like a whole different language, right? But we can do, we can do Spanish for sure. If we, i- if, if we need another language, then we would have to, we would have some help.
Wouldn't it be possible to off, also offer some kind of virtual input option for folks that can't come in person?
Yeah.
I, I thought that that were, I'm, I'm still also thinking of how we got community input on our search. It was nice to be able to cast a wide net of input, like just because I can't make it to these three, you know, input sessions, I still, as a stakeholder, see pop up on the district website and I can share my voice.
So we, we, we do, you, you can, you can create a survey that, that goes out that, that asks, you know, very similar questions.
Awesome.
Um, and then, and what we ask when we've done it with districts is we just make sure that, that, you know, it's not an outlier. It's not somebody answering that.
Right.
It fits in with what the group that you guys invited to be a part of.
Yeah.
So I, personally, I think we have to break it up by feeder pattern. We can't do one in a district this size. And we've got, we might even have to look at possibly doing multiple in a feeder pattern based on language needs. And I think Jody, I mentioned that to you, especially in certain parts of our town. But I think we, from an administrative perspective, we absolutely have to work by feeder pattern. And what we can do is work with campus principals, PTAs and that whole feeder group to help get the right people there, I think, if y'all need that. So.
Justin, do you want to provide perspective? When we did the community input for the last bond, it seemed like we struggled to do, have a good turnout at all six feeder pa- patterns. So, um, so what we did, we had cabinet steering committees that were formed, that passed our 14 and 19 bonds. And it was sort of a cast a wide net, get a bunch of stakeholders on those committees, come up with a plan to get take to and shop, get feedback on into the community. In both of those bonds, there were community listening feedback sessions throughout the district. Hit both, in my opinion. Yeah, it was, they were successful events in the sense that they were well-prepared, they were good, they provided the right information. They were not successful in the sense of actually getting community members to show up to the end vote. I think it was, especially at the 19 bond, there were community sessions where we set up chairs for, you know, 200 people. Two people showed up. Six people, you know, for an entire feeder pattern. So that, that has been our experience.
We do, we, we provide a list of, of just recommendations on who, who to invite. We don't want to turn anyone away. You can cast the net wide, but we also recommend that you are targeted in inviting people like, and you can use your feeder, principals generally are a good way to identify parents and, and staff that can be a part of that. So we want to.
Now, what, what we've seen work in large districts is you put the elementary principals on it and, and they'll go out and get the people, right? And, and the junior high, middle school level principals will also, they'll, they'll be about half as successful as the elementary parent. And then, and then your high school, you just approach your booster club presidents and the people that are highly active and like, and then say, look, we really need you to come to this. And then the hard part is getting, the, the hard part you're going to have, we find, is getting the business owners within the feeder pattern to get them to come to the, to the right one. And so that's where you'll come in, because we're going to ask you to, to personally invite people.
And I think that when we were successful at doing this, we were working closely with the chamber, who's very active, very large, trying to bring people in. I don't think in the 2019 that we were. And that could, I, did we do a net direction review and identify what, why you did so low?
Yeah, I, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't think that we did, but, yeah, I don't know if I necessarily agree that the, the chamber was the, the scene.
And the other thing you need to know, unlike Fort Worth, unlike Dallas, unlike Austin, El Paso or San, San Antonio, we do not have very vocal community groups. It's very sleepy here in Arlington. At a board meeting, one person shows up to speak or there's 30 people every night to speak.
Not your blessings.
I know.
Absolutely.
Yes. So that is part of the problem. We don't have community groups that are very active and passionate about the school district, which is either a good thing or a bad thing.
Well, there's two.
Depending on your eye structure.
I disagree. If you're, if you're doing this, you might get more participation just because you're within their communities. The other thing, food always brings people to town or to do so.
Yeah.
Because these are evening meetings, we do recommend that you have some, something to, you know, nourish them and keep them.
Yeah, I, uh, on, on the, on the structure though, I think it's still the right structure to, to, to get heavy lifting work done. In a disaggregated way is very hard, I still think. Maybe the approach of having some sort of castle identity, getting critical mass of those to generate, and traditional part, I think that is super important. I don't think it's as hard to do that as it is to then get the feedback on what that group produces. We do have, I think, sufficient critical mass of involved people across the district to make a really good group of folks to do that.
So, so as far as the community advisory group, we are going to address mission, vision, beliefs. That's what I think I'm hearing.
Yes.
Yeah. We've already talked about the board priorities and the key progress measures. We've looked, talked about your current board policy. We've talked about as well announces and then we'll work with the administration on the advisory committee meetings. The, as far as, because it's, um, um, we're going to have multiple meetings across the district, scheduling those between now and probably through March, it'll probably take us that long to get those meetings scheduled.
We can do them probably in, in two nights. We, we just will have, you know, we'll each individual take one.
Yeah.
Uh, and then we would ask the board members to kind of split up.
That's how we've done it in the past is.
Yeah.
We would have two a night.
And then the cabinet.
Over two or three nights. And.
So we need to start looking at dates for that and then also working with your leadership team. The leadership team is probably easier to schedule, but the community meetings will be, we need to get those, start looking at.
Depending on how many we do at night, we'll need to get those scheduled pretty quickly so we can get our team.
Yeah.
Pretty good.
Be more of us.
Process wise, can I ask real quick, do you, I, I want to be sure the board also will have an opportunity to weigh in on this SWOT as well. You're going to do a SWOT, but the board's going to be able to do their own SWOT.
Yeah. We need to have another board meeting. This was sort of a high-level view of this is where we're headed and get your input on the process and make sure that we are clear on what you want in terms of these things. So the next meeting, you all have already taken the inventories, the team trust, the good governance. We do want to review those with you. We do want to review those with you, um, I think that just clarity around that. Um, we'll do a SWAT analysis with you at that time, um, and, uh, what else?
And that, and that's where we'll start really digging into the, the essential roles. You know, what, what your role is, uh, what the senior leader role is, what the operational role is. And so you have some of it in the, in the handout we gave you, but, um, the, the idea really tonight was to just kind of lay out the plan. Uh, there's going to be a lot of moving parts in a district this size, and so we had to have agreements on where we were going to go. Um, and then I think now we can start getting those things scheduled. So.
Yeah, and we do encourage you all to attend the community meetings if you can. Um, as an observer, as a listener, we want you to hear what the community is saying versus participating with the community, if that makes sense. Matt?
I just, I wanted to see any reactions around the room.
Those were the ground rules.
I'm great with that.
And it's the ground rules for our other committee, uh, citizen committees as well, so.
And we will ask the cabinet, senior leaders to do the same thing, that you will find that people start looking at you. But we do think you ought to have teachers there and campus administrators there, um, and just, and parents, and just make sure that they're, that, that campus administrators don't need to take charge, and that's who they are, right? That's what they do, but you need to have the teacher voice more than the administrator.
I want to be really deliberate too about your policy. So one of the problems that we have in our system right now is that we have people who refer to the twenty fourteen strategic plan language, and some that refer to district policy language, and some that refer to our most recent strategic plan language. So based on the input that we get and what you all land on, we're going to propose this policy change coming up.
It needs to all along.
Everything has to be the same.
And that should be either updated to the current one, or just delete it altogether.
Well, this, we gotta have this policy, so we're going to update it with the new language that y'all get through this process. But we've got to put an end to having different language on everything.
Oh, absolutely.
Can I ask a question? Because I agree with everything you said, but again, I want, I, I want to see, like, make sure I understand what that looks like. I actually like what it says about pedagogy. And I don't think that it conflicts with any direction that we're headed with our, with our strategic plan, with our district priorities. I like that the district is going to strike a balance between controlling the delivery of a well-managed curriculum. And I, I like that we're saying we don't follow the strict script. I like that we do that in Arlington, I see.
So I think what we would do is based on all of the feedback that we get through all of this, we will propose to our governance team, our governance committee, policy change, let the governance committee debate, then take it to the whole board for debate. So you, you will end up debating all of that at the end. But based on all of the input that we get in, in this, this spring, we'll help propose some of this change for y'all to consider. And I do, I think, and I'll just use theory of action, because David wasn't going to bring it up, so I, I'll bring it up. But I think we've got to wrestle with whether that goes in local policy or not.
Right.
Some districts, it does.
And, and the reason why I just really want to put that out there in existence, the reason why I have my eye on that, is because this is, it, it, it goes hand in hand with a lot of what we're wanting to prioritize, because teachers feel respected and, like, they're doing what they went to get a degree to do, when they can have an art, they can have the art of teaching, and that's supported by policy. And I feel like when we're not supporting that by policy, that's where it is ripe for misconstruing or not existing. We say, why not just do amplify, because we don't have anything in our core policies that protects against that. And so I just, I do hope that we, we think about things like that, because if it's, if it's all new, you know, kind of like the calendar approach, our calendar committee, they didn't go off of the old calendar. They went with a clean slate, and they cranked out a beautiful calendar. I don't, I don't disagree with that same process here, starting with our mission and vision. But I also want to make sure we're being mindful of what is working and what we still hold true, even if we're starting with a clean slate. And the pedagogy piece, I think, is something I personally, I don't want it to be for everybody, but I would want it preserved, so.
Well, I promise you, we'll do our best to bring a good recommendation to y'all.
Awesome.
So I would, I would think that what you're talking about is, is that as you develop the system, which is, you, you, you have a system that's operational right now. Um, and, and Deming says that, uh, you know, every, every system is perfectly created to produce the results it produces. Ever thought about that? Your system is perfectly created to produce what's being produced right now. What your superintendent is doing is leading you to make sure that the system that's in place, that your, whether, whether it needs to be tweaked, changed, thrown out, rebuilt, whatever, whatever the term is, it's going to produce what you're wanting it to produce. And so if, if those words are important in the system, then we put them in there.
Right.
Uh, if, if some, if theory of action is not important in the system, then we, then we take it out. But once, what your board policy is going to reflect is the overall thoughts about your system.
Yeah.
Right? And, and, and in general terms, and then, then you're going to have, um, uh, a, a strategic plan and action plan with actionable goals and, and leading and lagging, uh, lagging measures and all of that. And so you don't get to what most districts that we encounter have this issue, where we start blaming people when it's really a system's issue.
Right.
And so what we want to do is build the system, so that we now have a system on which, and if you got to tweak it, then you tweak it. Right? As you go along, nothing's saying that you're going to create it perfectly the first time, and this is going to be it, and you fall. I mean, you're going to, you're going to come across those things, but the pieces that you need to have in there, you need to have in there. But the pieces that you don't, you don't. So. All right, we got you at six nineteen.
We're done.
Questions?
I know, I thought. Well, there's a lot more we could do tonight, but I think we're going to reserve that for the next meeting. Um, the team trust, the good governance.
Yeah.
Um.
That, that really needs to be a good, a good solid meeting.
Yeah.
With just.
What sort of questions do you all have for us?
I managed expectations. I told them they'd be here three hours plus with you all, so, yeah, I just set you up for success.
Dr. Smith, you know that I come preloaded for four hours. Y'all want to keep going.
Keep going if you want.
But, but we, I think if we're going to have the next, the, we, we really need to then, once we have these questions answered, we need to come back with a work session with you and lay out the, the first pieces of this, and then put it up against community meetings and senior leader meetings, so that the process works through. But we needed to answer some questions with you tonight, to know how you wanted to do.
I love, I want to keep going.
We, we can start book studies tonight.
There are books.
You already, you already gave them this.
I got, I got two more books waiting for y'all to say, though. Oh, yeah.
Hey, I'm about to make a long trip. Do you want to tell me the names, so I can listen to them?
Well, I've already done, but sure. One's, one's upstream. One is called upstream, and one is called multipliers.
Oh, multipliers.
Good choice.
Questions, concerns, comments?
We have answers to.
We, we really want this to be meaningful for you all. We want this to, to be what the board, like, you all are setting the direction. Uh, we want to be clear on your expectations for us as we go forth and facilitate.
I'm excited, I'm excited about these meetings. Um, I'm excited about this team. Good governance is hard, but I think based on this team's performance together in the past, it's a pretty, uh, propitious sign, so.
The, oh, Jody, in, in, what is the, the next level of the board involvement? And I'm not, I, I know the SWAT's coming next, but what are your touch points with the board through the process? Like, when do they, do they get a mid, a mid-process update? And then take it to them at the end? What's that look like, uh, their involvement in the whole process?
Uh, so, so technically, the next time we're in the district is when we're kicking off the actual process.
Okay.
And we're going to ask to meet with the board first, and, and we're going to, we're going to, we're going to talk about mindset and governance, um, and do the SWAT analysis, and, and talk about some very specific things within the strategic team, which is who you are. There's nobody else responsible for strategy in this district. Let me say that again, there's nobody else responsible for strategy in this district. And you guys are going to, are going to say what it is that you want to accomplish as, as the school district. And that's our next meeting. And then we're going to go about and have some other meetings with you and your team, with the community, we're going to really listen. And then, and then when we come back at the end of the, and then we're going to come back and do a second set of meetings with the senior leaders, with the community, and then finish back with the board. And then that's when you're going to see a pretty heavy draft of, of what this is.
And we'll likely have one, so we'll have a, a high score meeting, we'll have an ending board meeting. We might have, I think we'll have one more board meeting where we bring the strategic, um, the, um, what do we call it, the, the team of fifteen, or team of what do you call it?
Yeah.
The strategy execution team. Strategy execution team, where it's your cabinet and the board, like, getting real clear on those strategic objectives, making sure that what, everything that, that goes in column two of the scorecard, there's agreement. First of all, the board says, yes, these are the most important things that we want to anchor on. And that the, the, the leadership team is very clear about what the expectations for them, so that they can begin to develop these action strategies around it. So I think there's one more meeting in between, after the community, uh, meetings, at least after the first community meeting.
And then, yeah, I was going to say, then there's one more after, once you get it, so that you guys can meet with that. We call it a different thing, strategy execution team, team of fifteen, however you want to say it. So you can sit, and that's when you really get to ask questions about the actions that they chose, right? Um, and I'll say this, you, you don't get to do that very often, because that's not your role. So you can bring a sleeping bag and maybe a tent, but you're not, you're not getting a camper, and you're not getting, uh, you know, you're not building a house or apartment or anything. You get to go kind of have those conversations and then back out of that role, and let them do what they do. But it's good for you to have that information as you go to the grocery store and go to church and those things. So you, you're armed with information to have those conversations.
What is your end goal for this, to be completed and done by? Yeah, I think, well, I think the end goal, I will tell you, the, probably the most time-consuming piece of this is the, um, um, lagging measures, your last column. Um, we're going to need to, you know, what, what, what's our baseline, what data are we using? Um, what is our, you know, X to Y by Z, y'all know the ISO, which ISO credit to do this, but I think that's, that takes the longest. But the goal is to have this hopefully completed, um, I would say, you know, what do you think, May, June?
Right.
May.
So we want it by May, so that we can influence our campus and district improvement plans for the summer.
Yeah, and then it's fully implemented.
And your budgeting process.
Yeah. And what's, what's really great, once this is fully implemented, I think your next phase of this is to take it to the campus level and cascade your campuses, then have a balanced scorecard, it's similar. So we, we like to say, the scorecard actually replaces your district improvement plan, your campus, minus the compliance stuff that measures part, but, um, but, but we get real clear on, we don't have all these different documents telling us different things, or a different set of goals. And school districts are notorious for having, we've got board goals for the superintendent, and then we've got this other set of goals for our district improvement plan. But then we have different goals for our campuses. We're, we're getting real focused and aligned, but starts with you all, and then it cascades down.
Question on alignment. And then, um, will we use this, well, the scorecard to replace what we're doing now?
Yeah.
So.
For superintendent evaluation.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And then guess what he uses it for?
To evaluate.
So are y'all coming?
Well, I don't know. I'll ask you later in the site.
So, so I, well, I, I think that the May goal, because that's going to influence your budgeting process. You know, I mean, I, I don't know if you guys have thought about this, but since twenty nineteen, since the increase in the basic alignment, then, with, you know, you have, you have kind of a double hit here, right? And that you lost enrollment, so, so your dollars there were hit. But then at the same time, if you go to the Texas Controller of Public Accounts, you can see the inflation rate. And so you guys, in, in a district like this, you're dealing with really about eighty percent of your buying power that you had in twenty twenty-one going into next school year.
And have unlimited handbags that were asked.
Yeah, which is, you add the security issue on top of that. So I think it's important for your community to understand that you're already starting with eight, you know, uh, eighty cents on the dollar, what you did have, and then now you actually have more that you have to pay for. And so I heard the conversation, you know, a balanced budget is, is al- almost impossible in today's school world. And so, you know, and that's where I think for your point of view, that, that fourth perspective, that finance perspective, I think it needs to be very clear how you're funded, because people see their tax bills go up every year.
Right.
But what they don't understand is you don't get that out, right? It, it goes, it just means that the state pays less. And so, um, I think you can clearly articulate that in perspective four, to where that is, is understood around the whole.
Uh, a couple of things on this, just from my perspective too. By May, then that allows us to very clearly say budget and human resources, products, how do we resource the things that you want to accomplish in the first year, in the second year, in the third year, and so, because those, those are big, big decisions, and it takes, uh, some sys, uh, system shifts. So we've got to get this done in a thoughtful timeframe for us to really influence next year. So that's, that's why May. And then the other one piece of feedback that I wanted to make sure you all heard, and this is, I, I've heard this from the staff, campus level, district level, what people are looking for from the strategic plan is not only a line direction, but something that inspires us to be better.
Yeah.
There's got to be something that makes us want to be the choice for everybody around. And when I start to share some, some data that we recently got with y'all, about who's making those choices and where, where we're seeing people go, we, we've got to take control of wanting to compete and be the choice that people choose. And we, we have got to figure out a way to inspire that, and have our community talking about that. When they're in the grocery store, it, it, to be, uh, the promoters, that, that promoter score we've talked about, to be the promoters we need in our school system. And our, our staff wants that. They want it, uh, aspire to be something better.
Braving patterns.
Yes, braving patterns.
I think if our community is armed with the right information, they can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
We're excited.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Are y'all, are y'all done, or you have more?
We have more to go, we're going to close session next.
Oh.
We're going to move somewhere else. Um, so we will, we're going to be in a closed session in the board conference room. I'll call it closed, but we'll be there, but we'll be on recess starting at six thirty.